Hi everybody, Adrian Fontes here. Did you know that the Democrats of Greater Tucson has a website? The DGT.org and if you subscribe, it's only 20 bucks. You can support this great weekly communication where folks get together. Sometimes there's candidates, sometimes folks like me pop on. They help understand what's going on in the world. The Democrats of Greater Tucson, the DGT.org. Join up today.
So please welcome Natalie Luna Rose as our speaker today. She is currently serving her second term on the TUSD governing board. She is also a proud product of TUSD, having attended Bonias Elementary, Alice Vale Middle School and Rincon High School. Her sisters and mother are also graduates of Rincon. And her daughter and nephews are currently attending TUSD schools. As a parent now, Natalie has always been active in her daughter's education, serving as president of the Booster Club and Site Council. As a member of the Tucson Unified Parent Advocacy Council, Natalie continued to advocate for better policies, sustainable funding and strong public schools at the Arizona State Legislature. Natalie has been involved in grassroots organizing for over 20 years in Tucson. She has participated in the public process at all levels, from local school boards to national parks to the US House of Representatives. Currently at Disability Rights Arizona, she provides strategic leadership on community outreach and engagement. Natalie is a native Tucsonan and a proud Wildcat. She and her husband Josh have been married for over 20 years. They spend time with their daughter Lily, enjoying what Tucson and Southern Arizona has to offer. Let's give her a nice night, warm, wet welcome for being here.
Hello Natalie.
Hi, hi everybody. Thanks for, I didn't know if anybody was actually gonna kinda wanna come and hear me. So I appreciate your time here at the lunch hour. And I see some familiar faces, so good to see you. As Joe said, I'm Natalie Luna Rose. And in my second term of the TUSD governing board. We are nonpartisan, as most school boards tend to be, but I think you can figure that we're a fairly progressive board with the exception of one person that is registered, not a Democrat. So I've enjoyed being able to work with other people who are like-minded and wanting to serve their community and also the fact that we are a board of, of a board of five, we are, four of us have kids in our schools right now. So we all walk the walk and talk the talk. And again, I'm grateful to my colleagues for their support and also their guidance. We all guide each other through this process. I am a native Tucsonan and my family ties go really far back. My grandfather was first generation and I'm third generation here. And we are a Rincon family. My mother and my uncle, my daughter is a junior at Rincon. I was actually trying to get her to go to Tucson High so we could maybe have a little bit of different color at family reunions, but purple seems to be our our signature color, so. But I'm glad that she is active in her school. She's in the color guard, marching band, drama, so already in some student clubs, so definitely following in her mother's footsteps. Also think, like to thank Michael for inviting me to speak today. I didn't get to come speak the last time when I believe my colleague Dr. Shaw was here due to some scheduling with my job. I do work for Disability Rights Arizona and I'll give my little spiel about Disability Rights Arizona if you haven't heard of us. We are a nonprofit that advocates on behalf of people with disabilities. My job is that I am the communications director. And I've been there seven years. And what Disability Rights Arizona does is besides advocating for people with disabilities, we are a nonprofit law firm. And it is a mandate from Congress. So every state and territory has what is called a protection advocacy agency or a PNA, and so we're part of the PNA network. And I am not an attorney and nor do I play one on TV, nor am I a social worker. So my job is to make anything our attorneys and our, especially our attorneys, because they like to be a little long-winded, no offense to the attorneys in the room, to make it more palatable to the public. And I really enjoy my job. It is a place where, I always say that disability rights is the last bastion of civil rights, because nobody really thinks about disability rights until they need to. I'm so happy to be working with people who are also like-minded and take on civil rights protections for the marginalized in our community. And I do believe, yes, Francisco put, we are having a conference, thank you. We're having a conference, June 13th, Annual African American Conference on Disabilities, which is an intersection of race and disability. You don't have to be African American to attend, so you can just Google us. I can actually put our website in the chat later if you're interested in learning about our organization. But today, I'm just here to talk about what's happening in TUSD. And especially in light of, I know I've had a few questions posed from people about, especially since now the Department of Education has been dismantled or currently trying to dismantle. I know that there was an executive order that was signed a couple of days ago. And what does this mean for the district? So I will say as, and I wear a lot of hats. Most of the time I try to wear my parent hat because I have a daughter in the schools. But as a board member, I've been speaking with our superintendent, Dr. Trujillo. Right now, the two main things that the district really relies upon from the Department of Education is IDEA grant funding, which is funding for students with disabilities, Medicaid. Medicaid plays a large part in that, as well as we use Medicaid dollars to pay for staff, like nurses and healthcare aides and any sort of aid that the students with disability needs. And the second, which is pretty also really large, is our Title I funding. Our school, our school district's majority Title I. We have a small handful like Sam Hughes and Fruit Tinler, who do not get Title I funding due to the type of population it has, but it doesn't mean that those schools don't have needs. So right now, we are just watching and waiting on that. Not sure what, we've heard different stories that it's gonna come as block grants to the state. And as you well know, we cannot count on the state for much concerning public education dollars. So really concerned about if it becomes a stock, a block grant, how, what is the state gonna do? What is Tom Horn's office gonna do? Or is it just gonna come straight to the federal government? From the federal government to TUSD directly? We don't know. We don't know how much that will be. And school districts rely on the Department of Education to to figure out the funding for every district that qualifies for the Title I funding. And that's all dependent upon population and so forth and tax rate of the state. And the Trump administration in their bright and guiding wisdom fired everybody that does that work. So we have no idea what that's gonna look like. We have no idea how much funding's gonna come, because that staff, which was under the National Education Tax, I can't remember the acronym, but there's an actual agency within the Department of Ed that figures all those formula funding out. They're all gone. They've all been fired. So we don't know what that's gonna look like. And my other concern with if it comes as a block grant, that Tom Horn, I don't know how many people follow Tom Horn on Facebook, on her social media, but all he touts is about charter schools. And all he highlights are the charter schools in the state of Arizona. Does not highlight anything concerning any traditional public school. It's all about charters. And I know recently, he had recently said that that the ESA, the empowerment scholarship grants or the vouchers, he's gonna need another $200 million to fulfill the scholarships that his office committed to under the ESA. So where would they get that $200 million? Well, here comes Title I grants. So obviously it hasn't happened yet, but you see where I'm going, that that could, could happen. So like I said, working with our CFO Ricky Hernandez, Dr. Trujillo, keeping a close eye on what's gonna happen there. And our schools would be in a world, I mean, we're, we're already struggling now. We would be in such a world of hurt if we don't see those Title I dollars. Same with school lunch. I know I've also been asked questions concerning school lunch. We are a district that qualified to be able to feed all our children for free. We used to have the program where it was free and reduced lunch. And then two years ago, the district qualified, which is great that every child regardless of their background can have breakfast or lunch. But that also is because our district has become that much more poorer, for lack of a better word. We have more economically disadvantaged students than ever before and families. So if the school lunch program also goes away or they go back to the type of funding we have free and reduced, or even something where they don't even offer free and reduced, because we've also heard that, then that's a lot of children that will, we'd have to figure out how we would be able to feed those kids. Because a lot of them, from stories that I've have learned and heard from teachers and other administrators and families, sometimes it's the only meal that those kids get. So boy, I feel like I'm coming in with the worst terrible news of what's going on in the school district. But I think everybody knows, I mean, you're all very committed people, knows what's going on. But you know, I'm hopeful, and I'll open it up to questions in a minute. I'm hopeful after I attended Saturday's rally and all the people that came and all the work that I know that Senator Sanders and Congresswoman Ocasio-Cortez and Congressman Assar is doing, hoping that's resonating. We did lose our big champion in the loss of Raoul. He was a member of the Education and Workforce Committee. And for those that don't know my background, I worked for, well Congressman Gohba from 2002 to 2010. And he really supported me in my first race for TUSD. And he did in my second despite his illness. And tried to do as much as he could for the school districts down here. So, so with that, I'll open it up for any questions.
My question is about state funding this year. What are you hearing out of the legislature that will impact USD this year, if anything thus far?
Well, if anything, to be honest, we'll be probably going okay for the rest of the year and going into the next school year. It's FY 28, 27, 28 is where we would probably see any of the problems. Because they'll most likely level fund it. I know the governor was asking for more money, more so than she did last time. But you know, I'm, you're always hopeful that, that they will finally just be like, okay, you guys need this and this is, it's gonna be nowhere near that they owe us. I mean, let, state legislature has owed $100 million to public, traditional public schools for years now and still hasn't funded it. So if they come to us with the same budget dollars, we can work with that because we know that's what's, you know, we've been able to work with that. It's in the next school year, not this upcoming school year, but the following school year is where the concern is. Especially that's when we would see the lesser dollars from Title I not come in if that were to happen.
And what is it that, that TUSD students are not getting due to that $100 million debt?
Um, well honestly, I, and I see Lucy's hand up, some of it has to do with teachers. Teachers are leaving the profession, so we're, we're losing good people in the classroom that can guide our students, teach our students and make, make it less stressful. I think there's a lot of stress right now. We're also asking a lot of the kids for testing. We test them way too much, which is a discussion we've had in the school district. It's, it's a lot of little things, Michael, that it's not just one big. It's, it's like death by a thousand cuts by not having the type of funding. I see Lucy's hand up, I'll call on Lucy.
Thanks Natalie. I appreciate it. I'm not having my picture on because I just got done with the exercise class. But anyway, I was gonna ask you about 123. So tell me what, what you're hearing, what you're thinking. I have been keeping up with the legislature on this. And so I know that there's, you know, competing ideas.
Yeah, I, you know, I'll be honest.
Could you explain everyone, what 1 through 3 is?
So, well, you know what? I'm gonna, I wanna, Lucy, if you don't mind, I'm gonna ask you to do the background because this actually started right before I became on the board. If you wanna kind of, yeah.
It has to do with when we went to the voters to approve the allowance of using state trust funds at 6.9% to fund extra money going into education. So now we have been dependent on those dollars for 10 years. And it will expire, because it was only gonna be for 10 years that we were going to use state trust funds monies for the purpose of adding the needed money for classrooms and teachers, et cetera. So now we have to go back to the voters to approve another rendition of 123, which the Republican legislators either wanna lower it or they wanna raise it slightly. And, and the governor wants to raise it much more to like, I think 8.9 to get more money. So they're basically not agreeing on this 123, which we had hoped would come forth for a special election this year. But it appears it will not, which means that we have to wait till the 2026 election where there will be a whole lot of stuff.
Yeah.
On that ballot, it concerns us because it did not pass by a whole lot the first time, because people were uncomfortable with taking money from the state trust lands. But the state trust lands money is supposed to be for education. Just, this was a different way of getting that money. I hope people are following me, because I know that it's harder when you don't have your picture on. But I, I've been following what's going on now and they're just kind of fighting each other, so it's not going anywhere and it makes me very nervous. And yeah, so that's kind of where we are.
A full follow-up on that background, if you would Lucy. Has the state trust fund depleted at all as a result of the, the higher rate of extraction for, for schools over the last decade?
No, no. It has not negatively impacted the state trust lands at all.
Right.
Right, so thank you. I didn't, thank you Lucy for allowing me to put you on the spot. Like I said, this was something that 10 years ago, I wasn't paying attention to, unfortunately, you know, unfortunately. But Lucy, to answer your question, if anything's changed, they're still fighting. The last time I talked to Representative Nancy Gutierrez, who's also a teacher at Tucson High, they're, they're at an impasse right now. So obviously, we wanna see this come again and be voted in. Because without that money, once again, that's a negative hit to our budget. And then we start looking at those negative hits and things start happening that people don't like to hear about, cuts to programs and teachers and closing of schools. I mean, everything is, it's a domino effect, right? So last I heard, they're, they're still, they're still butting heads on that, which is really unfortunate. And yeah, as Lucy said, this, I do know the state trust land has not been negatively affected at all. And when it was passed 10 years ago, I also do know that was surprisingly enough, that was under Ducey, it was actually a little bit more of a supportive legislature. So we are a different spot now. I'm grateful to Governor Hobbs to want to raise that up to almost 9%. But she's, you know, and she's already talked about the use of the veto and in, you know, maybe an executive order. I did hear that grumbling last week. But I, I think Lucy's right. I don't think we're gonna see it on the ballot this year. So again, and it's those type of things. If that doesn't happen, if we don't, I doubt if we do see it in November. I'm not sure this November, we have to wait to 2026 and there's other propositions on the ballot. That's where we've looked into perhaps, and we're still exploring it for TUSD to call for an override. We're the only school district, we passed a bond in '23, which is for facilities. So right now, we're like in the middle of upgrading HVACs, especially now that it's getting hot, security fences and, and things to buzz people in, you know, cameras. HVAC and roofs are our number one priority right now. But with an override, we're the only school district in Southern Arizona without an override. And we haven't had one for years. And the override would obviously help with teacher salaries, with paying for other type of programs that currently are either not getting enough. So it's, again, everything is a domino effect. And I, as a, as a parent and, and frankly, as a alumni of a public school district, the one that I represent, I just, I don't understand. And I've, and I've been on this, you know, I'm going into my fifth year on this board. I still don't understand why we're always having to fight about money to, money for kids. It just, I, it, it boggles my mind every time I get on the dais. It's like, you wanna have committed parents like the four of us advocating on behalf of children, but you don't wanna pay for it. And then you'll come and get upset that the board didn't do something because we don't have the money for it. Or we have to somehow allocate it somewhere else. Maybe you'll come back this way. So I, I'm hoping that Prop 123 will, things, cooler heads will prevail, but I'm not sure. I wish I was more positive.
Just remind us, if you would, how much that, that bond was for last cycle?
480 million.
480.
400, yeah. Right now, I do believe they have just finished HVAC system at Soro. And they're working on flooring over at Pister in their music room. But yeah, HVAC is our number one thing, because at the beginning of every school year, we've had to close school for the day because an HVAC system, especially this past, this, up, this school year one right now, at least five schools missed a day or two because the HVAC systems just crapped out. And so they're on the top priority list of getting those fixed. So thank you to all of those who also voted for the bond in our, in the special election. That is, has really helped us because the, the state has what is called the School Facilities Board. And if there's something wrong with the school and it, School Facilities Board can come and fix it. But it has to meet so many, some certain criteria. So an HVAC system going down wasn't always considered a priority by the School Facilities Board, which, living in a state of like we do and how hot we get, I always, that was another thing I don't quite understand. So I'm thankful that we have this money to make sure that the kids and the teachers, you know, are, are comfortable, well, they're gonna clap them all day.
And just, just as a reminder, I believe it is a fact that bond money such as that can only be spent on physical resources, like actual physical infrastructure, correct?
Correct, yes. Unfortunately, it does not go to teacher salaries. That's why we are looking into and having study sessions right now on what an override would mean.
So Natalie, would you like a little positive testimony?
Sure.
Okay. Our son, our younger son is 30 years old. But there was a time we moved from Las Vegas to Tucson. And his fourth grade year was kind of an interesting transition for him. But then he had a teacher by the name of Mrs. Burns. And she was his fifth grade teacher and everything turned around for him. And just, I, I had to ask my wife if it was okay to give that testimony, but she said absolutely. I mean, there's, there's teachers, in fact, there's teachers with us today that I salute. We've heard from some of them. And there's, there's, there's nothing more incredibly, incredibly affirming than having a student that was your student back in the day and let, they, they let you know how much you meant to them and help them, you know, get over a hurdle. I mean, it's, it's the power of, of education, for sure. So I was asked for a positive moment.
Well, thank you, thank you. If I, you'll indulge me and then I'll, Paul can ask his question. I have a teacher, two of them I can think of that, you know, as a TUSD student, one in elementary school, Ms. Judy Teasley, she was my second grade teacher at Bonias. And she passed recently, but she was, if, if I were to become a teacher, I'd wanna be a teacher like her. I had a really rough time with math and she worked with me throughout the whole year. And she was somebody that I adored, even as an adult. And I would get really excited to see her and she'd ask me, you know, if I, and she didn't live too far from me, so I'd run into her in town at the grocery store, Target or what have you. And I'd always walk up to her and say, oh, hi, Mrs. Teasley. And she was like, Natalie, we're adults now, you can call me Judy. And I'm like, no, that's against the law. I can't call you by your first name. So I'm indebted to her and as well to my high school teacher at Rincon, Bill Broyles. He was my English teacher that, I think, I, when I ran for school board the first time, he sent me a note with 50 bucks and said, I bet you'll win. Here's your, here's your, my $50. So he was, yeah, so I'm, I'm grateful to them. He, he actually did critique my website when I put it up for a school board. So he was still, and he's still doing his teaching, so I appreciate that.
Paul Winger has a question for you, Paul.
Okay, thank you. I just have a question about the Constitution, why it's not taught in schools. I think it's fantastic. But I sure would like to know, how come I ask so many high school kids and they don't know? Never heard of it. Couldn't even tell you what we the people says or means. So why isn't it?
Well, it's not mandated anymore. I think that depends upon the type of class they're taking. I know in AP history, which my daughter is in right now, she is learning about the Constitution. And I already had a Constitution book. But it's unfortunately not, a lot of, like I said, a lot of the time, there's a lot of focusing on testing, which only leaves so much room in the day. It has been talked about. I mean, you're not the only person has, we've had people come to, call to the audience at school board meetings and ask us, you know, we'd like, they'd like to see more civics and especially the Constitution. So it's something I can, and I've thought that about that myself. So it's something I definitely would, can talk to Dr. Trujillo about. But it, again, it's also how much time in the day do they have? And that's not a good, and I'm not excusing it, that's just kind of where we are.
Well, if you get the opportunity Natalie, there's some really good arguments to your advantage here on this. So whoever you're talking to, from before you're born till after you die and everything in between is governed by that Constitution. Every law, everything you do, wages, you name it, it's governed by that Constitution and we don't even tell them about it. Every law, everything you do, wages, you name it, it's governed by that constitution and we don't even tell them about it. You know? I keep looking at this right here. You see that? Here's another one. See that? These are direct, deliberate, clear, blatant violations of a constitution. I can't even get anybody to do anything about it. No titles of nobility be granted. What am I doing with that? How come I contact everybody else and they say, where does it say no title of nobility? Constitution, Article One, Section Eight, how about that? Section Nine, how about Section Ten? You know, geez, and they go, huh? And so uh, some very, very good arguments to your advantage. So if it's not mandated, let's get it mandated.
I appreciate your question, Paul. Thank you. And I'll, I'll bring that back to, to our district.
Thanks.
Okay, let's see. Any other questions?
We'll give people an opportunity. Oh, there, Andrea just popped her hand up. Andrea Kennedy?
Yes, she did.
Need to unmute yourself, Andrea, if you're gonna ask your question. There you are.
Well, thank you for coming, Natalie. A comment and a question. I think teachers are as responsible for freedom in this country as soldiers and lawyers. And in terms of the federal money. What are you hearing from our federal representatives about protecting it, getting it back? What's the word?
Yes, thank you for the question. So, um. Federally within the state, we have not heard a word from um Congressman Cisco Money. Um, he's, he's a Rincon graduate. Um, so that's disappointing. Gallego, uh Senators Gallego and Kelly are. Haven't, they've put out more general that they were gonna fight for the. Public education dollars and I did uh also attend Senator Kelly's Medicaid Town Hall a couple days on Friday. Um, and that he was working with Senator Gallego on education. Some type of education funding legislation, but I need to follow up on that. But there hasn't any be, been anything direct. Um, like I said before, our, uh, earlier. Um, we kind of lost that with the loss of Congressman Geraldo cuz. Uh, this time last, well, actually right before he got, he announced he was ill, there was a, he hosted a, education town, uh. Roundtable with other. With uh, T U S D administrators and teachers at Ross Grudge and just talking about. The funding and what the things, uh, ideas that the Republicans had had to cut a Title One. So. I mean, he was a fighter and champion of perpetu- public education to the very end. So I know that his office was still working on that, but. Right now we're kind of in limbo. I wish I had a better answer for you. It's just kind of, that's where we are and I think that's just kind of where we are across the board, not just with public education, but with everything else.
You wanna let people know how they can donate to a specific, specific school or a specific program? I need some donations to Mansfield, for instance.
Yeah, so you can, let me get to the T U S D website. There's a couple of ways that you can, um, you can donate to your favorite school or your neighborhood, the school that's down the street from you. Um, you can also, and I will put that in the chat. Um, you can also donate through what is um Educational Arrangement Foundation or E E F. That kind of is sort of like the friends of T U S D. Um, like right now, they're doing shopping for kids at different schools across the district shoes. Uh, a shoe shopping day at Skechers for families that um can't uh afford to do so. So, um. I'm, I think that's a, a great way to donate. Now, if you wanna donate to a specific school. I'm gonna put this in the chat here. And it can be to any school. You can donate to all the schools. Um, you can donate to, um. If you want to just, you pick a school. You were, you know, in the band or you were in cheer or cross country. You can direct your, your. Terrible tax dollars to that program, even if you don't have any child uh going to that particular school. So I, I put the. The chat in, the link in the chat. And then I will also put just the actual district link. And if you're not, um. I, hopefully all of you are uh familiar with the Educational Arrangement Foundation, but I will also put them in the chat. Um, they do great work as well. Um, I'm really grateful to E E F for. All the work that they've done for T U S D over the years. So I, I highly recommend those.
And these are uh also charitable tax credits, right?
Yeah, correct. Correct.
Yeah, they're, they're fully full tax credit, so it's a one for one dollar match. Uh, for twenty twenty, tax year twenty twenty four, it's uh two hundred dollars for a single filer. At a household and four hundred dollars for married joining, jo- uh filing jointly. Uh, and this is to be distinguished from uh, from the school tuition organization tax credit, which uh goes to help fund pub. Uh, private schools. So that's, that's not one that we terribly encourage.
No, and I, so I also put my email in the chat. Please feel free to um email me at any time. My door is always open. If there's something you thought about or. Wanna ask me to, uh, to expand upon further in email chat, happy to do so.
I have something that you could uh expand upon further with uh, with this attack on the uh, the uh Federal Education Department. Um, I think the, the main place uh where. Uh, I mean, there's many places, but the, the main place in terms of dollars. Uh, that the, the Department of Education interfaces with local schools, local public schools uh is I D E A. Can you explain what? I D E A is, how it's funded and uh how it's under threat?
Sure, so good question. So um I D E A is the, um. The uh. Individuals with Disability Education Act. And that was. It's a federal law that ensures that children with disabilities or students with disabilities receive what is called F A P, Free in Public Education. Um, and underneath F A P, that includes um an I E P, which is. Individualized Education Program. Uh, or the Section five oh four, which is also allows for accommodations to that child's, um. Time at school during their workday if, if they need accessible devices, if they, um.
Individualized tutoring?
Individualized tutoring, uh support staff, um either a one-on-one aide. Or how many they need depending upon that child's um nature of their disability and perhaps how severe that is. And uh, this was something that, um. If you're a child with a disability, you are under the law. You are afforded education up to age twenty one. So you don't graduate, you um at age seventeen, eighteen. The time is expanded to make sure that that child meets all the requirements under the law and. So they can go up to age twenty one. And. Which I think sometimes, whi- which is great in terms of sometimes the student isn't able to meet all the. Cuz they still have to, they still have to meet the credits. Um. I, I sometimes, I feel conflicted about that because. I hate the fact that we're putting these, that on um children like that, you know, a child with a disability, but it's also, I, I know like. I don't know, has is good and bad cuz um, but it's a, it's a law that um. Was administered by the Department of Education. Uh, and so a lot of students and disabilities and their families, uh those parents have. Both been calling the district and the office that I work for, Disability Rights Arizona, what's gonna happen to their child? Are they gonna lose their services? Are they gonna lose their one-on-one aide? Are they gonna lose their accommodations? Um, such, you know. The I D E A um allows for, you know, inclusion. That's the part to that, of this whole anti D E I. Um, it's really D E I A, diversity, equity, inclusion and accessibility.
Yeah.
Inclusion and accessibility are intertwined. So. If you take that away because they're trying to make it. It's so dumb, like trying to make it equitable for everybody by taking what is making things equitable for everybody. Um, under the guise of making a colorblind and, you know, meritocracy, blah, blah, blah. Um. So it. It's kind of in a precarious position right now. Um, I know at Disability Rights Arizona, uh my job is also um to monitor. Because of my background, to monitor bills, monitor what's going on at the current White House and in the state legislature. Um, it's the same thing like with the Title One grants, do the block grant. Does the dollars for I D E A go into also block grant to the state? And how's that gonna be disseminated? Now, I D E A is under ADA, but it's not. Always, but it's, it's, there's these nuances. It's not ADA either cuz it's its own law. Um, so it. It's a tough one. Um, I mean, it was, you know. It was put into law in the mid seventies, uh, um, under, I think it was called like Education for All Handicapped Children. And then when the word handicap got changed to Indivisible Disability Education, like that was like in the nine, early nineties. It's. It's something that I think if I um were a parent of the child with a disability, I would be really concerned. And they have a right to be concerned. Um, cuz it allowed their child to be in, in inclusive environment instead of being locked away. Or at the special school. Um, allowed them to be a part of the society that they deserve to be a part of. So. Um, I think right now what my suggestion is, is just. Really lobbying, um Congressman Cisco Money's office. With making sure that those children that are um protected by this act. Get the services that they needed, that nothing changes. Because what's gonna be tied into I D E As. If they go through these budget cuts, the eight hundred and eighty billion dollars in Medicaid cuts. Then they'll get, a lot of those families are gonna lose their. Lifelines and getting their kids what they need because access has been cut cuz there's no money. Because the Medicaid dollars are gone. I mean, everything has a ripple effect, so highly encourage. Sitting at Cisco Money's door, I, I don't, you know, it's like, he's the one. I, I think we're okay. I mean, obviously letting Kelly and um Gallego know. Um, and they are listening, but you know, just a, a nice gentle reminder to them, but definitely Cisco Money. Especially since he sits on appropriations. Um, that is important because those bills are gonna come to his committee. Before to, you know, be voted out of the Approves Committee onto the House, um floor of the House. So he's got the power right now and that's why he really, really, really needs to be lobbied hard.
Okay, we got a question from Suzie Anderson. Hi, Suzie.
Hi, oh, hi, Mike. Hi, Natalie. It's wonderful to see you again.
Hi.
My question is, how does it, how difficult is it for parents to negotiate? For their disabled or child that needs help? How, how difficult is it in each of the schools? Um, are the wealthier schools easier to find that in or, um. The schools that are, um, the ones who get. Federal dollars because they're low-income neighborhoods. Uh, can you talk on that?
Well, thank you for the question. So, um, T U S D has what is called the Except- Exceptional Education Department or X Ed for short. Um, that is Department of Overseas, um, Special Education Teachers and Psychologists and Speech Therapists. And works with the families of children with disabilities in the district. Um, it's a tough department in terms of the fact that. Working in special education, from what I've been told from special education teachers, while it's um really uh rewarding and. They love what they do. Um, there's so many steps in terms of. Um, making sure the child's receiving the services there. Um, there's a lot of paperwork. Um, sometimes as humans are not listening to each other and this doesn't just happen in T U S D. I know we're talking about T U S D cuz I'm on the board, but. Uh, I know this, you know, education, special education across the board, working in that particular areas is a challenge. I'm not, to my knowledge, that I know that there's, uh, you know, a child that is at. Let's say, um. Uh, Van Buskirk, which is in the South Side, as opposed to a child that is at Sam Hughes, which is only just. What, maybe a couple miles from each other, but in different worlds, so to speak. There shouldn't be any disparity on what that looks like. Um, but the difference might be is that the parents that have their child at Van Buskirk or. O- Ora Choa, which is in the heart of South Tucson, might not have his money, might not have the resources for extra monies. Um, might not have the resources to get perhaps. Um, private help to um supplement what they're getting for their child at the school as opposed maybe to the parent. Who's in the same situation with their child at a Sam Hughes or a fruit vendor. Um, because they do have the extra resources. I think that's my, where you see the disparities. It's, but you know, technically, no, that's not supposed to be happening. Um, and if it does, I do hear about it and we do discuss it and try to see what, you know, the best course of action is. Um, but I, I think, once again, it just really comes down to resources, which is always. Really disappointing, but if a, and I am not supposed to, you know, cross the line here, so I'll cross it just a little bit, just to give you the background. Cuz I, I wanna answer your question correct, uh, correctly. So if a parent of a child with a disability, whether it's in T U S D. Or Amphia or Sunnyside, wha- what have you. Excuse me, is not satisfied with what their school has provided their child. Or not adhering to their I E P or their five oh four, they are welcome to seek. Um, and it is their right to seek um outside counsel. Um, or mediation um with uh, uh, an attorney. Whether it's a private education attorney or a place like Disability Rights Arizona, which advocates. On behalf of people disabilities and we are private, or we're not privately funded, we are federally funded and we have federal grants. Um, and I, I will get to that in a minute. Um, so a place like Disability Rights Arizona will, um. Redra- uh, will advocate on behalf of that child with a disability and their parents with the school district that they are having issues with. And if, uh, and that is um done for free because um P N As are. Protection Advocacy Agencies are, um. Our monies come from uh federal grants now to add. So you hear federal grants and you're like, oh, did it almost get frozen? Yes, we almost got froze. Um, but right now we were saved by the congressional, by the C R, the um continuing resolution that. Passed just a week ago. Um, but a place like D R A Z was this close of, closing for a little bit. So. It's, that's the nature of where we are in this country right now, that any of the help that we're, we have known to have. And should be afforded to by our constitution is being obviously, um. Directly attacked by people who don't, who don't believe in it. So we just need to keep voicing really loudly that. This is not who we are.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see. We got a couple hands up. Francesca Pardes.
Thank you, um, and thank you Natalie Luna Rose for what you do.
Thank you, um, and thank you Natalie Luna Rose for all you do. Um, I have a, just a question, how can we best educate the public About all that the Department of Education does, because I know I worked closely with the previous Um, administrator, and he did amazing work, because I know Save Our Schools does amazing work. But how can we generally educate all that the Department of Ed does? I know one of the things they do is fill in the gaps for the states When they have budget shortfalls and our state is Sadly in danger of that. So how can we really get the message out, what it does? Because I spoke to a few people in the past week or two and they really had no idea.
Right. A lot of people don't know what the Department of Education does or did. Um, they think that they set the curriculum. So everything I've seen on social media, oh, it's great, because now the states can set their own curriculum. States And school boards have been setting their own curriculum for a long time. Department of Ed had nothing to do with those things. Um, and I, so to answer your question, to be honest, I think working with the unions Um, both T E A, Tucson Education Association, um, and the like to getting the word out Um, on what this means. I do believe I saw something, and maybe Lucy knows. Um, I think there's gonna be a rally on Sunday Uh, with all the um, unions, all the education unions, Sunnyside Uh, Amphi, associations, um, About saving, you know, what Department of Ed does and saving Department Bed and those programs. And I think I saw a flyer on Facebook like this morning. Um, so Uh, I think working with them and just honestly talking to your neighbors and doing what you're doing. Um, writing, uh, you know, Opeds or at least letters to the editor and being able to push that out via social media. I mean, everything, everybody gets their news from that now. Um, and really asking our, our elected officials to Um, to speak loudly on what, what this means. I know, um, Mayor Romero has already had Posted something not so long ago, but you know, it's asking any of those people that, um, went through the system. Paul Cunningham is Also a Ring Con graduate, uh, but uh, you know, a really strong and a Ring Con or a T U S D teacher. I mean, asking those people that have at least a louder voice, but again, the more voices, the better. In any way possible right now, I think that that's kind of where we are.
Hey, Andrea, you have the last question.
Thank you. I couldn't hear anything. Uh, I, I was, the, the previous topic you were talking about About uh, allocation of resources to the schools. Do the schools in low-income districts, are they getting the same amount of money or are they not getting the money? And the parents just don't have money to supplement the gap? Whereas somebody in midtown, the parents might, will have more money? I, I guess I just wanted to clarify what you meant when you said There's, there's a real disparity and it usually winds up in schools on the south side. What, what is the exact problem? Is the money not coming? Is the money not going there or is it going there? I don't, I don't know. I just wondered if you could clarify that if I'm, if I'm making any sense at all.
No, 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 and you're making sense. And maybe I was not totally clear. So So what I was saying before is that, like, under the Individual Disability Education Act or I D E A Um, that a family who, there's two Two children, both getting the same type of cer- children with disabilities Getting the same type of services, but one's going to Ochoa and one is going to Sam Hughes, which is just a couple of miles Uh, to, to the east from Ochoa. Um, that family at Ochoa might not have their own personal resources to get Extra help outside of the school day, like perhaps a family would Or a child going to Sam Hughes, because they have more resources, personal resources. That's what I meant. But to answer your question in terms of dollars, so, um, it depends on population size. But all schools are getting, you know, what is called, you know, their M and O dollars. Um, maintenance operation dollars, and they have to pay for everything that happens at their school. Um, salaries, supplies, so on and so forth. And what we're seeing right now is the district as a whole Isn't getting as many dollars because of declining enrollment. And declining enrollment has anything to do with, um, A lot of it, there's a, so, there's a sizable chunk, and I don't quite know the number, but with the ESAs We're seeing money go away. Um, with, you know, people leaving to go to other districts, go to charters. We had, lost kids from COVID, they just never came back. Like two thousand students just disappeared. Where did they go? Exactly, where did they go? Um, a lot of homeschools, some of them did come back, because we do offer an online Um, school, a Tuva, Tucson Unified, a virtual academy. So it's, it's not necessarily that Maybe, you, uh, and I'm just picking on these schools because of where they are. Ochoa and Sam Hughes maybe are getting the same amount of dollars depending on their population, but also just the fact of The socioeconomic reality that, um, the school's using all its dollars, but As families can't help supplement, you know, uh, having a P T A. Having, you know, to raise money for other things, because even my daughter went to Sewell, uh, over here on the east side. I mean, we still had to have a, we still had to have a P T A, because, you know, We were considered, you know, a school that had maybe a little bit more money, but we, in, in reality, we didn't, and they didn't in their M and O budget.
Okay, we actually have a, a, a timely announcement from Lucy Messing. Lucy, would you like to kind of give us uh the four one one?
Uh, March thirtieth, uh, they'll meet at Ori Park, which is uh at six five five North Hughes. You can see it in the chat. And they will begin at two o'clock walking to the federal building on Granada. Um, and there is actually some information on the Tucson Education Association website and the Arizona Education website about What will happen with the loss of funding From the Education Department as well as what the um Education Department does. So you can find that information if you look for it. But the rallies have been amazing that, and the protests that are occurring around here in Tucson, people are getting out and showing their concern.
Yes, they are. Okay, Andrea, Andrea, you have the last question.
Oh, uh, that, that's okay. Well, actually I do, since you called on me. Um, You talked, uh, Natalie, you talked about declining enrollment. If kids are going, from what I understand about going to the charters, It'll only pay part of the cost. No, wait, the charters are free. All right, now I am confused. The declining enrollment partially because that they're going to charters? Do they have to pay to go there? Do, do the E S O dollars cover all of it? Because I thought I, I'm confusing this with private schools, aren't I?
Right.
Private bill cover part of it, but not all of it.
Correct. So, okay, a family's like, calls and, you know, I'm gonna pull my kid out of T U S D school or Amphi school, because I want to go take them to Lehman Academy. But that, they can still apply for the E S A dollars. Doesn't necessarily have to be private. So that's why it's, it's a scam. Um, you know, and taking dollars away from public school, from a public traditional, um, public school District like T U S D. Um, and what we are finding those, that those kids that do leave, They go to a basis, because it's supposed to be this, a lot, like, we get a, we get them I'd say a quarter of them back, because they're realized, these parents are realizing they see shiny and new and dollars. And they go to these schools, realize they're not getting what they thought they were gonna be getting, because it looks shiny new and, and have You know, shiny dollars, you know, um, flash in front of their eyes. They're coming back to their T U S D homes, school. Um, so it's interesting, but like I said earlier, you know, I just found this out this morning, that Tom Horn's gonna be asking for two hundred million more. So we have a state that's hostile to a district.
So there are charter schools that are, that are, that have cost, and there are charter schools that are free.
Well, charter schools are, the charter schools are, I know, it's really confusing. Charter schools are free, but a parent can, can say, well, I'm just gonna take my school, my kid out of T U S D and I'm gonna apply for this E S A. And they can keep the money, but then they still end up sending their chart, their kid to a charter school and not perhaps like a, a Soundpoint. It's, like I said, that's why it's, 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 it's just a bad deal, because that They say, oh, well, I'm gonna send a private school, I'm gonna take E S A, but then I'm, I don't want him to go back to T U S D, so all of a sudden to Lehman. So they're not paying for Lehman technically, but they are because they took the E S A dollars, because they don't really have to. There's no oversight. There's no follow-up on what they did with those E S A dollars.
Yeah, and they refuse to implement any sort of oversight, because it's a, not a bug, it's a feature.
Correct.
Oh, hey, okay, everybody, let's hear it for Natalie Luna Ross on a great presentation today. Lots of good information. And might even be down the road more. So, and let's hear it for all the participants Of Democrats of Greater Tucson. Thank you for being here. And I've got a request. If you could email me some recommendations on speakers For our happy hour, I would appreciate it. Um, we want to bring the best speakers to you Uh, in the Zoom meeting and also the happy hour. If you go to the newsletter, my Uh, email address is at the bottom of the newsletter. So Natalie, Natalie, thank you so much. Lots of uh great information. Sometimes, like you say, it's a little confusing, but you know, we, we can do the hard math. We can do it.
Thank you, and I, thank you everybody for having me. And, and I'm sorry, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to intentionally be confusing. They, and when it comes to education, some of the laws are intentionally confusing, and so it's, it's, it's hard to disseminate. But again, my door is open. I left my email in the chat. Feel free to follow up.
Well, I, you did a great job.
Not all Natalie's fault, it's just there's a, an irreducible level of complexity to a lot of these laws, that it's just, it's, it's difficult to explain.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks again, everybody.
All right, have a good day.
Yep, you too.